An important thing to note is that the league does not support or endorse any individual or party. They are merely here to set, they set this up so that you, the voter, will be knowledgeable when you go to the polls. The timer will be Michael Shaw and he will raise his hand or raise signs up informing the candidates how much time is left. If you have any questions that you would like to ask, please raise your hand and Patricia Shaw and Deputy Lovick will pass out cards for you to write your questions and then if you raise the card, they will collect them and submit them to the moderator to ask. And now, our moderator for tonight's debate is Regina Rossel, Superintendent of Westside School District. Regina?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being so involved in your community to be out tonight to listen to our candidates and what they have to offer to Palmdale School District. We have a large slate of candidates, so going through our set of questions will take some time. We're going to have each of you give an introduction. We'll start on that end. You get two minutes. As Pauline already said, Mike is your timekeeper down here. He will give you a warning. He'll give you a second warning and then he's going to give you a stop sign. At that time, you're done answering your questions, so please turn off your mic. Let's let the next person go on. We have prepared questions, but we will also take questions from the audience. Your introduction will be two minutes. You will get one minute to respond to each question. If we wind up with less time than that in the candidate's response, it'll give us some time at the end for questions from the audience. Otherwise, we're going to be right at two hours tonight. So, I would like to give every one of you a chance to introduce yourself. We're going to start at that end of the candidates for introduction. Each question will move to the next candidate to start so that everybody gets one opportunity to be first. And then at the end, we will start the closer, closure on this side with Mr. Wilson. So begin, I would, to begin, I would like each of you to take two minutes to introduce yourself, tell us why you are running to be a member of the governing board, what unique characteristics you will bring to your service and your background, et cetera. So, we'll start with Mr. Carrillo.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for taking the time to be here participating tonight. My name is Juan Carrillo. I am one of the candidates for the Palmdale School Board of Trustees. The reason why I decided to run for this position is because I want my son to stay in school. When I found out that he was not going to be able to attend nine days out of the school calendar, that meant for me that he was not going to be able to learn what he's supposed to do on an elementary level. That's the reason, one of the reasons why. Another one is because I want to provide, provide, give something back to my community. I've lived in the city of Palmdale for the nine years and I believe that I can give something back based on my experience as a public servant. I do work as a planner for the city of Palmdale and I have with me nine years of public service. That's another reason why I decided to do this. Then, when I started attending the board meetings, I realized that there was not a lot of participation between members of the board, the teachers, the CSEA employees, and the parents. I noticed that there was a lot of anger and I decided to be able to do something about that. What I bring with me again is nine years of experience and I am used to dealing with developers as a planner. I do sit on a table with engineers, architects, and other private and public institutions. That's what I bring with me to be able to get everybody sitting and dialogue on what are the things that we need to improve on and so that we can work together and do the best that we can for our children. I believe that our children need to deserve the best education and the public education system is going to be better than it can be and that's, that's what I bring with me again. I'm a parent. I have a child in the system. He's a foregrader. I'm a public servant and I'm used to dealing with developers and other people at a table making decisions that are going to improve the education system for the best of our children. That's what I'm doing here.
Sandy Corrales?
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Sandy Corrales and I currently serve as your Palmdale School Board President. It has been my privilege to be the people's choice for the last 12 years. I'm the veteran school board member on this panel, elected three times. I'm going for my fourth term. When I was elected in 2001, this district was in disarray. There was a lot of scandal. Anytime you picked up the paper, there was a negative headline about lawsuits, pronoyism, low test scores, and it was a very embarrassing time for our district. I was part of the governance team that turned this district around. We have higher test scores that we enjoy today. We have more schools of choice that the community has responded to. They are running to enroll in our Avid Academy, our Aerospace Academy, our dual immersion schools. I think that's important. You will find that this time of difficult economic times with the state budget crisis, experience counts. Experience matters. I'm a known entity in this community. I am a past president of not one, but two chambers of commerce, Palmdale and the Antelope Valley Hispanic Chamber, and I also come with experience on the city planning commission that has served me well. I have to tell you that in this day and age, our city is under siege and I intend to promote our school district, promote our, our city, and make sure that we defend it. Four years ago, I ran uncontested and some people thought, "Well, that's fantastic. You know how lucky." No, I love promoting our school district. I love promoting the accomplishments of our district and I have to tell you, we have a great story to tell in the Palmdale School District and I want to end my opening comments by wishing our superintendent, Dr. Galizia, a speedy recovery. He has led this district with distinction and I intend to welcome him back upon his speedy return.
Mr. Farron?
My name is Jeff Farron. I've been on the school board now for eight years. I've come to you with a master's degree in administration, a master's degree in curriculum design. I've been an educator for 20 years. I think one of the things that brought me to the school board in the first place was, like Sandy said, when I came on the board, the district was in disarray. We were bleeding settlements. This district, the district was giving away money every time it turned around. We had 20-some schools that were all acting like 27 different districts, 26 different districts. They were all doing their own thing. They were developing their own curriculum, they were buying their own textbooks, they were hiring their own people, they were doing whatever they wanted, anytime they wanted. And there wasn't any leadership at this district office and that was a legacy that started a long, long time ago in this district and it extended out and it started to hurt kids. And it was the business of adults. This district did the business of adults. It didn't do the business of kids. And for years and years and years, that's all it did. And so, when I came on the district, I said, and PETA originally promoted me to come on the district, saying that they wanted to see change in their district. They wanted to see positive change. And what I said was that I would, I would, I would make that happen for them. I would bring about positive change. I would force this district to focus back on children. It would be a children-centered district. And it slowly but surely kind of developed away from that. We started to develop a legacy of children first. We started to ask ourselves, what are, when we make a decision, how good is this going to be for kids? And over the last six or seven months, we've developed away from working for kids. We've developed toward working for adults. And that's not okay. This district has to be children-centered. In order to promote this community, in order to do what's right for kids, we have to have a child-centered district. It has to go back that direction. And I'm here to do that. One more time.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Mr. Moffitt?
I know I'm preaching to the choir on this one, but times have really changed. I mean, a few years ago, you can pretty much figure when your child graduated from high school or college that they'd get out there and with a little bit of work, they'd get a good job and then eventually get a home and such and kind of progress on and have a good life. Well, things have changed, as you all know, and I don't believe they're going back. Maybe a little bit, but really, all the great, all the great economy of the past years, that was really a bubble. I think our children are going to be facing a lot more challenges than we expect. And what I want to do is bring some extra education into the, into the mix. Education that will help them be ready for the business world. Help them understand what are employers looking for. Help them understand what businesses are looking for and maybe even realize that one day, they could start a business. Now, the reason I bring this up is that, well, I've got a daughter in the school district and what I realized is there is a difference between great educators and great politicians being on the board. That's wonderful. When you have a parent on the board, such as myself, we ask different questions. You know, educators and such, they lay awake at night and rightly ask themselves, "Oh my gosh, what are we going to do to raise test scores?" And test scores are important. But parents ask a different question. They don't ask, they don't lay awake at night about test scores. They always lay awake at night and ask, "How is my child going to do in life? Are they going to have a successful life?" So, what I bring to the board, and I've got, well, I do have a background, not just a parent, but I'm also have a, a good background in education. I graduated Concordia Teachers College and I also worked over the years, training teachers, working with teachers, and I'm also a grants and funding specialist in education now. So, I bring all that to the table and hope to have the chance to serve you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moffitt. Mr. Ferrin Moffitt?
Hello, my name is Jeffrey Moffitt. I'm asking for your vote as a candidate for the Palmdale School Board. I'm telling you a little bit about myself. I'm the father of a seven-year-old that's in the dual immersion program. I've lived in the community for 24 years and I've been married for 26. What's prompted me to get involved and go off the sidelines is, like Juan, I saw as a parent that we were going to be faced with nine furlough days. I happen to be the most educated person up here in this board. I also happen to be the most experienced financial individual in the community. I'm a tax attorney. I look at books on a daily basis. I looked at the fact that we had $16.7 million that was claimed to be missing. And it occurred to me after looking at financial after financial, that the current board had been gaming the system. Just recently, two weeks ago, the currently ill superintendent admitted to a dual set of books, something that I'd asked for a forensic audit. When I found that a forensic audit wasn't going to be forthcoming, I saw that the school board was not responsive to the community as a whole. I saw that there was disenchantment with the teachers, disenchantment with the community as a whole. And they needed to have somebody, not as an extra educator, but somebody that was a solid financial professional, somebody that's experienced in business. I solve financial problems for businesses and individuals on a daily basis. So, I'm looking at coming in as the next board member, solving some of the financial gamesmanship, bringing back some relationships with the teachers, with the other employees. I also look forward to bringing into the community music, arts, sports, and I have a top 100 book programs, top 100 books ever written, that I'd like to see the kids read by the time they finish high school. I think that by having somebody like myself in the community, on this board, we're going to now have fiscal accountability, no more gangs.
Thank you, Mr. Moffitt. Ms. Ricks?
Good evening. My name is Joyce Ricks and I run for the Palmdale District School Board. I'm a mother of three children, of two boys and a girl, and a grandmother for one of which is attending the Palmdale School District right now at the elementary level. I'm single and have been a resident of the Palmdale for the past 17 years. My daughter went through the Palmdale School District and I was an active parent in the PTA during that time, so I get it when the parents say they want to be heard because nobody knows better what their children need than their parents. I'm also a past preschool teacher for Head Start here in this district and also was a PETA representative for the district. So, I also get it when teachers say they want to be heard and respected. Nobody, nobody works harder than our teachers to help prepare our children for the future that we're in right now. Things are a lot different than they used to be when I was coming up. So, I get it when the teachers say that they want to be heard. The Palmdale School District needs to restore ethical behavior at an atmosphere that reestablishes the trust in the district. The Palmdale School District needs to begin again respecting its employees, its teachers, the students, the community, and other educational stakeholders. Listening, learning, and creative thinking are the foundation of effective local decision-making. Therefore, creating an open environment where all the stakeholders can and will be heard is imperative. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith?
Yes, I'm Nancy Smith and I'm running for the Palmdale School Board because I think we need to reestablish trust. And despite what you've heard, some of the people say up here, there is no trust right now between the employees and the board. Part of it has to do, as Mr. Moffitt said, with financial information and the fact that you can go from being $16 million down to over $16 million to the good in one school year says that they do not have and do not understand what's happening. And I think with my background, I was, I've been a teacher, I've been a classified director, I've run a child nutrition program, a warehousing program, school busing program, been the assistant superintendent for business and the superintendent of this school district. And while we had disagreements, they were never based around what the truth was. They were based around what solutions did we want to come to. And I would also disagree with Mr. Farron, and I don't know what period he's talking about, but during my tenure, we did not pay anyone. We had no payouts of people. So, and I do not believe in that. I believe if you follow procedure, you will come to the right conclusion, it will come out, and people need to know what the truth is. So, we're looking at that. I am a mother. I have three children that graduated from Palmdale School District and the Antelope Valley High School Districts. I have twin granddaughters that are now attending Palmdale School Districts, so I have a great desire to make sure they get the best education that they can. And I would like to reassure everyone that I am here for the students and have always been here for the students, but you have to take care of the adults who take care of the students at the same time. You cannot do one to the exclusion of the other. Thank you.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes, I want to thank the legal women's voters for putting this on tonight. Thank Patty Shaw and Gina Rossel over there. We appreciate you so much for coming out and doing this. I appreciate all the people that are up here that are running right now. I am the whole package. Forty years educator, Teacher of the Year 2001 for LA County. I taught AP English 11 for over 30 years, 10 years at Palmdale High School. I had all of Mrs. Smith's children. I also did 20 years at Highland High School where I was a mentor, an educational coach. I worked for my union. I was a union rep. I picketed. I went in and saved so many teachers' lives, you can't believe it. And you know what? They became good teachers. All they needed was a little bit of help. And I realized that these are hard times we're going through. There's been a recession, but a lot of the stuff that's being set up here is not true. We care about our teachers, we care about our kids. We have had scores that have gone up. We have done, when I came to this school, the reason I came was that I got the students in my classroom from this school district at Highland for 20 years. I had AP honor students who needed remediation in English. They didn't know what a fragment was. They didn't know that high school was two words. That's why I ran for this board. I wanted to come in and make sure that we did professional development and brought up the rigor and relevance of this school. When No Child Left Behind came in, I was one of the advocates. There were some punitive problems with it, but it brought us up. We were teaching basically on the same page and we're going beyond that to Common Core. Rightly, you need people who understand education and who put children first over adults, always.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
Good evening. Thank you all for being here. It's good to see such a great turnout. My name is Don Wilson. I'm a first-time candidate. My wife Ruth and I moved to Palmdale in 1987. Our three children were educated in the Palmdale School District and graduated from high school at Highland High School. Ruth has also been with the district since 1987. She's currently a teacher, a sixth-grade teacher in the district. We have six grandchildren total, ages three weeks to 10 years old. And Ruth and I share a passion for children. We need to set them up to have a good opportunity in their future because things are not going well in the country, state, and in the, in this school district. I find it interesting that the three incumbents have said how things were, well, two of the three said things were in disarray when they took over. Well, they're in disarray right now. If you look at the relationship between the teachers and the classified employees, there is a big rift of trust. This school, the current school board has failed to rein in a accounting department that doesn't know how to account. And I've been coming to the meetings for most of the year. I decided to run after coming to meetings and quite frankly, being very disturbed by some of the things that I heard. There is a failure, there's a disconnect between the community and the students on the current school board. We need people in office that are going to put the children first, put the students first. We have some, the local controlling funding formula was passed. The way money comes in the district is changing. We need people on the board that are going to make sure we get that money to the, to the classroom, for classroom instruction, for the teachers, to support the classified staff who run the schools and keep the schools safe and help to have a, a learning, good learning environment for our children. Now, I'm, um, my qualifications, I have nine years of hotel restaurant experience, 26 years in retail sales. Thank you.
Our first question will start with Ms. Corrales. Palmdale, and this goes all the way down the line, one minute to answer this question. Palmdale School District has continued to make significant academic gains, both overall and with subgroups during the past number of years, as reflected in the API scores. If you are elected or reelected, what would you do differently to sustain and/or improve this group?
I think one of the main things that a school, a healthy school district does is it makes sure that it's got parents that are fully engaged. And of all 24 school sites that I regularly visit as a full-time school board member, I make sure that parents feel welcome at that site and that, again, that, that leads to an improving in our test scores. And really, the measure of, of student academic achievement is not just in test scores. We are seeing a change in curriculum with Common Core standards and certainly the local control funding formula that is on its way. But I want to mention how important it is that, that parents are part of that equation. And I have to say, I regularly visit all 24 of our sites. I give full access to our teachers, staff. When I walk onto a campus, I make sure that I talk with the school secretary, custodian, principal, to make sure that I have all perspectives to be a more effective school board member.
Mr. Farron?
Well, I don't actually, I don't believe that the, my progress is going to continue the way we expect it to continue. With the implementation of Common Core, I think we're going to see it stop for a while. And I think that that's because the instrument that we're using to measure progress at this point is changing. And realistically, I think we need to look at these, at these changes and say, "Things are probably going to stop for a while." We're not going to see the same level of progress. And it's not necessarily going to be because we changed what we're doing in the classroom. It's going to be because the instrument for measurement changes. And so, I don't think that we can say we're going to see that continue on. We'll see it kind of stop and stagger for a little bit until that hiccup kind of gets passed and we can keep on moving on. Once we do that, that legacy of professional development that we've established, the legacy of professional learning communities that we've injected into the district, those things are going to bring us back to that improvement. And we're going to continue on with the momentum. But for a while, we're not going to see that.
Mr. Moffitt?
Uh, one word. Parents. I mean, parents are so powerful in every area of their child's life. What I would encourage teachers to do as a starting point of that is, is level with the parents. I mean, our teachers are professionals and they carry themselves in a very professional manner, but I would encourage them to just lay it on the line and tell the parents, "Hey, you know what? I'm just one teacher. Really, you are the second teacher for your child. If your child's going to succeed, a lot is going to be on your shoulders too. I've got 30 kids in the room. I spend six hours a day. You spend the rest of the time with that one child. You can make a giant difference." It is, you know, it's great to say it takes a village, but the truth is, it's really going to take the parent and having them see the truth that if their child's going to succeed, it's going to be because of a great contribution that they make.
Mr. Moffitt?
Well, the premise that you had indicated that scores had increased continually isn't accurate. Recall, this last year, they actually decreased. Your side actually did wonderful. Matter of fact, I think that the Westside School District needs to be applauded for how they've been able to use after-student programs. That fits in with my music, arts, sports, and my top 100 books program. I also think that parent participation is wonderful. Some of the parent participation that is able to be achieved at the dual immersion school my son goes to is approximately 75 percent or so, as been said by the local principal. The, the thing that we have to look at is, are we going to have the community together, work and function for promoting education? Are we going to have honesty and transparency? If we work together as a family, we can achieve it. If we have, the current board is not going to have it.
Thank you. Ms. Ricks?
Well, with the local control funding that is coming down, it is going to bring more stakeholders to the table. That means parents, teachers, staff, everybody in the community will be able to come to the table. With that being said, that means that there will be more transparency where we don't have that now. There's not a lot of transparency. There are a lot of things that are going on that you don't know about, things we don't know about. So, with the local control funding coming down, that will definitely be a difference. And the morale has to be brought up as well within the school district in order for your children to get a good education.
Ms. Smith?
Yes, I think that test scores are improving. They were starting to improve when No Child Left Behind came in. Common Core will, I think, Mr. Farron is correct, come to a little bump in the road. I don't think it needs to be a big bump in the road if teachers are provided with the materials to go with the Common Core. If you're teaching in the lower grades and you need a lot of copies and you're limited and yet the money is in the, in the budget, it should be given out then the students will make their progress at a faster rate. And I think that any current board member should be aware of what books that, that are being used, what materials the teachers need and make sure that that is the first priority and that when you say you're going to spend $11 million on textbooks and supplies for kids, that you don't have $6 million of that left over at the end of the year when you're telling teachers they can't have supplies. So, I think it's important to get the money out where the students are at and to be transparent about that. And if you're not going to spend it, own up the fact that you're not going to spend it. Thank you.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes, I'd like to actually answer the question about testing. I was an instructional coach at Highland High School. I helped give benchmarks. I interpreted the data. I worked with teachers at AV High School and the state took them over to, to work on the benchmarks and their testing. No Child Left Behind brought some good things into us. We elevated, we, we could focus in and say, "We don't know the verb to be. We've got to learn this. We've got to, we've got to do this standard." I helped write some of the English standards for California. I just have to tell you, we knew that we were spending so much time on testing that we were losing something while we were doing it. Good teaching is good teaching, no matter what you're doing. Every four or five years, a new program comes in. No Child Left Behind, I helped with it. Common Core, I'm embracing some of the things on that. But good teaching is good teaching. And we don't have to have a new silver bullet every four years. We need to make sure we have professional development and we teach our teachers to teach kids. Look at tumbleweed. We were down 100 points and up 100 points.
Sorry. I see Ms. Whitaker has arrived. And the question, I don't know if you were here to hear the question?
I wasn't.
Okay. Palmdale School District has continued to make significant academic gains, both overall and with subgroups during the past number of years, as reflected in the API scores. If you are selected, or if you are elected, what would you do differently to sustain and/or improve that group?
Well, I believe the Common Core has moved us to a, a different level, but I think the standards are, will be great if we teach the teachers how to correctly implement them. That's one thing that I've been dealing with. I'm a parent of two children in the Palmdale School District. And with that being said, I haven't seen a significant increase in my children's score. And one of my children, I believe, is a little bit stronger as far as academics than the other, but I have not seen a, a direct increase in my children's score. So, I feel that with this, that we should have some type of flexibility for parents as well as the teachers. I mean, parents need to build partnerships with the schools and with the teachers in order for us to make a significant, I'm sorry, I need to divert my attention a little bit, to make a significant growth as far as the Common Core is concerned. I helped write some of the English standards for California. I just have to tell you, we knew that we were spending so much time on testing that we were losing something while we were doing it. Good teaching is good teaching, no matter what you're doing. Every four or five years, a new program comes in, No Child Left Behind, I helped with it. Common Core, I'm embracing some of the things on that. But good teaching is good teaching. And we don't have to have a new silver bullet every four years, we need to make sure we have professional development and we teach our teachers to teach kids. Look at tumbleweed, we were down 100 points.
I see Ms. Whitaker has arrived. And the question, I don't know if you were here to hear the question?
I wasn't.
Okay. Palmdale School District has continued to make significant academic gains, both overall and with subgroups during the past number of years, as reflected in the API scores. If you are selected, or if you are elected, what would you do differently to sustain and/or improve that group?
Well, I believe the Common Core has moved us to a different level, but I think the standards will be great if we teach the teachers how to correctly implement them. That's one thing that I've been dealing with. I'm a parent of two children in Palmdale School District. And with that being said, I haven't seen a significant increase in my children's score. And one of my children, I believe, is a little bit stronger as far as academics than the other, but I have not seen a direct increase in my children's score. So I feel that with this, that we should have some type of flexibility for parents as well as the teachers. I mean, parents need to build partnerships with the schools and with the teachers in order for us to make a significant, I'm sorry, I need to divert my attention a little bit, to make a significant growth as far as the Common Core is concerned. But hopefully, when I, if I do get elected, I can help with that being a parent. I can help us as parents have a voice.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
I'd like to make two points on this. I think there's some good things that have happened in this district. The professional learning communities for the teachers, I think, is good. I think it can be improved. The English language learning program and the involvement of parents is very good. There, on October 1st, the board approved $738,000 for independent contractor services for supplemental education services. I want to make sure that money is getting spent well and wisely for tutoring for our students. So we, and then lastly, we, well, let me go back on the students. More after-school activities, opportunities for learning, clubs, tutoring, so on and so forth. For our teachers, we need to concentrate, you know, we do things to help students that are having difficulties. My wife's a teacher, I know what a tough job it is, and we have teachers that struggle. And we need to find ways to make sure we're helping them to improve, because every student deserves an excellent teacher in their classroom every year. And we need to look at ways to try to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I would start with stopping the negativity between the current board and the teachers and the CSEA employees. It seems like that's the number one thing to do. Start working together, have a board that is going to work with the teachers and with CSEA, with the parents, which in turn will make happier teachers going into a classroom and be able to do their job without worrying about what's going to happen to their salaries or their workdays in the near future. That would be number one. Number two would be to close the achievement gap, which has not been discussed tonight, but that's, that's going to be done or can be done with the new implementation of the LCFF by increasing the ESL programs. Remember that we have an 80 percent population of Hispanics, who are, most of them, or it's not all of them, coming in with, as a second language. How about seeing all the stakeholders, all the parents, teachers, board members, so that we can discuss how we can better improve and implement new policies to be able to improve the scores and keep the scores as they were a few years ago.
Thank you. Next question will start with Mr. Farron. What does it mean to be part of the governance team in a school district? Who are the members of the governance team?
That's it?
That's it.
Actually, I want to correct Mr. Correia, that's 69 percent Mr. Correia and less than 30 percent EL students in our district. As a member of board, it's really important that you know what's going on in your district. I think being a good steward of a school district is about knowing everything that's going on in the district without knowing specifically what each department is doing. It's not my job to be an accountant, and I'm fascinated by the fact that everyone up here, as we go down this road, thinks they're an accountant. They're all looking at the budget, they're all second guessing the state, they're all second guessing the county, they're all second guessing independent budget, the independent audit people, they're second guessing CGA, they're second guessing the independent fact finder. Every single person up here is second guessing all of those people, and they think they're all involved in some sort of conspiracy. Are you kidding me? That can't happen.
Thank you. Ms. Markoff?
Okay, well, the governance team, of course, is the superintendent and the board. To me, it, the way I look at it, it's a governance team, okay? Which is like in basketball, all right? You look at the Lakers, when they're, when they're behind the scenes and when they're not in front of the public, they may not get along, they may argue a lot, they may fight a lot, but once the, once the game starts, once the, the place is filled with people, they work as a team, they've got a shared vision. And that's what I think a governance team does. When they're in front of everybody, they work together, when they're behind the scenes, that's when they fight. And it's the kind of fighting that, and I don't mean fighting in a bad way. I mean, a lot of times you got to fight, you got difference of, difference of opinions. I like fighting with people because sometimes I'm right, sometimes I'm wrong. But the point is, it's a shared vision and everybody's fighting to get to the, to get to the goal line, to get to the final goal, which is the children succeeding not just in school and out, but succeeding throughout their entire lives.
Thank you. Mr. Markoff?
Governance team is a comprehensive set of practical strategies and structures that will help ensure effective team practices become a permanent way of doing business in the school district. That's the official definition. Here, we've had 5-0s, rubber stamps, and now 4-1 rubber stamps. The fact that my esteemed colleague, Mr. Farron, questions accounting, I happen to be the accounting authority. We've had corruption and fraud. We've had dual sets of books. We needed to have somebody that is an accountant, and I happen to be that accountant. We need to have somebody that understands business structure, not self-deal. We need to have somebody that just doesn't look at what's the text that's going to happen from the superintendent and everybody answers the same way. We need to have people that actually go out, ask the right questions. We can't have a rubber stamp. I will not be a rubber stamp. I will ask the questions and I will help get things accomplished. I ask for your vote.
You're here. So that we don't use up our time, if everybody could please keep the in-between times moving along, it would be appreciated. Ms. Ricks?
The governing team is exactly that, a team. It's the board, it's the superintendent, it is the parents, it are the, all the staff, everybody that is included in this community. To me, according to what I have been read, what I've read with the new funding that's coming down and the new rules, that you are a stakeholder here. Now, as far as Mr. Farron saying that I am an accountant, I'm not. I'm a marriage and family therapist, but I'm not, I'm not an accountant. And I do know that I do want to be able to understand, at the layman's terms, whatever's going down. So therefore, when you sit your books in front of me, I want to be able to understand them. I'm not going to rubber stamp it just because somebody next to me will say, that's what you're supposed to do. I want to be able to understand everything so that I can be able to tell, be responsible and tell my child, tell my neighbor, tell my store manager, whoever I'm working with, this is what's happening.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Yes, I think the governing team is that, the governing team includes the board, the superintendent, the teachers, the classified, the parents, everybody, and then it's the board's auspices to make the final decision. After the team sits down and everybody has input into it, then it becomes the board's responsibility and they own whatever the decision is that they make, but they do that after taking into account what the whole team has brought together. So yes, the board has responsibility, but they do not have the right to be the only opinions heard at this point.
Thank you. Ms. Stanford?
When I got on this board six years ago, they sent me to a class in Masters in Governance. And the discussion of what a governing board was is totally different than most of the definitions that are up here. We are a five-member group plus a sixth additional member, which is our superintendent. We make policy, we make sure that he has the fiscal, things that he needs to carry it out. We make sure that the policy, if we go down, we're able to view that the policy is being carried out. But the superintendent is the person who works with the teachers and works with his cabinet. We work with them, we meet with them, but the governing board is like a clock. We're at the top and then the superintendent and then everybody else is at the bottom, and the policy drifts down. The fact that people view this as, as one whole big team, there are team parts of it that come together, but the governing board is the superintendent and the five board members, and we make policy. We don't micromanage.
Thank you. Ms. Whitaker?
In my opinion, we're here as a body, a group to help make these decisions. I've been one who has had to come to the board for decisions in my children's education. A lot of the decisions I did not agree with. Me myself, I would like to see the board work as a board, work as a group. I have a master's degree in organizational leadership, and I would like to see everybody here come together and lead. I mean, we're leading for parents, we're leading for organizations, and, and, and the students, the students, I don't know if this is me, I'm new to this, but, you know, the students are the ones who need our help. And I'm here to help the student. I'm here to make sure my child is afforded the education that he needs to thrive. I want to make sure my children attend college, as I did. I'm a product of the Inwood School District, and I would like all of our children to have the same opportunities that I have. I mean, I think that we should build partnerships with other organizations, other agencies.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
In my opinion, as far as a governance team, I do know that the, the board employs the superintendent. In my view, it's their job to make sure that things are running the way they should be. And they should listen to the community, they should listen to the teachers, they should listen to the classified employees, they should, on any particular issue, they should weigh the pros and cons and get as much information as they can before they make a decision. I know sitting up here is a difficult job, and when it comes time to vote, I want to make sure that I've done my homework and presented my views and listened to people and discussed things with people, and then make that difficult vote and not have people in the community feel like they weren't heard and that the board doesn't care. So this board, I think, has been, has isolated themselves from the community and especially from the employees of the district, and we need to change that. That's what a governance board does. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I believe that a governance team begins with you, the voters. You are the ones that want to elect three new board members to give direction to the superintendent as to where the school district should go. That's the beginning. You, the voters, are going to elect three of us. Then the board gives direction to the superintendent, and the superintendent delegates that direction to its employees, the teachers, the CSEA employees, and everybody else. Then as a team, the parents come into place where we are going to be able to work together and make sure that we have a responsive team that is going to have one goal in mind, and that is the education of our children. That's what the governance team means to me. Again, it begins by you, the voters, coming out and selecting the three board members that are going to take the Palmdale School District to a better direction. Thank you.
So the question was, what is the definition of a governance team? There's only one question, there's only one answer to that question. The governance team is the five elected board members and the superintendent. I don't expect the challengers to know that technical term, but it's an important distinction. And we all need to, to remember that it's the voters that elect representatives to serve on the school board and represent their views. So that's what I've been doing for the last 12 years, engaging the community. And I have to tell you, engaging the district is not just the teachers' union, it's not just our classified union, it's our taxpayers, it's our senior citizens, it's people out in the external community that may have no tangible ties to the school district. That's an important distinction to make, and I, I tell you this because I, as part of the governance team, I've served with the best superintendent, Roger Galizia, in recent history, as you know, he's been the California Superintendent of the Year, and I've served, I hate to say, with the worst superintendent back in 2001.
Moving on to the next question. This will incorporate some questions from the audience, and this one will start with Mr. Markoff. According to local reports, including some of the questions I have here, morale amongst employees is reported as being low. Do you agree with this or not? To what do you attribute this concern? As a trustee, what would you do to improve morale, increase trust, and keep teachers from leaving the district?
Okay, I would say it's pretty obvious that it is, it is low. It's low for the teachers, it's low for the classified employees, and you know what? I'm not going to point fingers because that's not going to get anything fixed. What's going to get things fixed is respect for everyone and appreciation for everyone. And whatever happened in the past, hopefully, we can all be adults and work together, let go of what happened in the past, work toward respecting each other. I respect the teachers, I used to be a teacher, the work they do is the most important work in, but in, in all the economy. So that's what I would do, it just starts with respect.
Thank you. Mr. Markoff?
I think honesty. I think if we have a board that is honest and forthright, they tell you, this is what we have to work with, these are the parameters, and we don't have a second set of books, and we don't have second agendas, and we're not closing schools in one case and giving them to our friends. We have a situation where we are, we're honest, we're not trying to break a union, we're trying to educate our kids. And my goal is to educate my kid and 19,000 other kids just like him. That's my only focus. The, as long as we have, that is the focus for the teachers, as long as we have that as a focus for the board and the superintendent, then we will have strong morale. We have people that are dedicated. Look at the number of people that are here. You're dedicated because you want to see a good result, and I appreciate that. The three new board members are going to give that to you, I guarantee it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, first of all, we need to build trust. I agree with you, Mr. Markoff, we need to have some honesty within our school district. And in doing that, we have to build a morale for the teachers. But Ms. Corrales stated that the governing, I'm sorry to have to go back to that governing board, because our local control funding that's coming down, our new rules, where you are included in our governing board. The community is included. Now, I don't know if she read it, but I read it. And it said that you are included as the governing board. So don't think that you're not. Everything that you do is important, what you think is important, and with the teachers, the staff, everybody is important. So I'm not taking that, that just us up here, five of people that's going to run the school district. We take in what you say, and then we come as a team and we sit down and we come up with the right decisions for the children.
Thank you.
Can I ask you to repeat the question? I think we've gotten a little lost here.
Sure. According to local reports, morale amongst some employees is reported as being low. Do you agree with this or not? To what do you attribute this concern? As a trustee, what would you do to improve morale, increase trust, and keep teachers from leaving the district?
I agree that the morale is extremely low. I think part of that, you can see when you have both the certificated and the classified union that did not back any of the three incumbents currently, and I think that's due to lack of trust and lack of respect going two ways now, because, and I think to build that trust back and to bring freedom of discussion back and take fear out of the fact that you can discuss anything with anybody, will bring that back. But I do believe that it is, you have to build the trust back, and there is no trust now.
Thank you. Ms. Stanford?
Yes, thank you. I believe there's another side to this, and it's about insurance. And if I could give you uncapped insurance for the rest of your teaching career, morale would go higher. It's really hard when there's finances that are so bad that we're, we're struggling over the cost of rising insurance. I, I feel that way. The question is about morale, and I think, as soon as money comes back into the district, I think it's really hard when you don't get a raise for a few years, and we need to give you a raise.
Thank you. Ms. Whitaker?
Well, first of all, I, I agree in the morale for teachers alone. I believe that the teachers, they went through their schooling for a reason. They would like to be heard, they would like to work their jobs and be comfortable. Me myself, I, I work for LA County, and we're going through union issues as well. I believe that they should be afforded the pay and also the benefits that they deserve in order to live their lives. They have families just like we do. They have families that need to be taken care of, they have kids that are sick and hurt and different things like that, and they need to be able to sustain. I would, you know, make sure I improve morale, I would give them recognition, I would give them the benefits that they deserve. And why don't we meet regularly with them, inform them about the procedures, ask their, ask their input, give them, you know, at least what they deserve. I mean, me myself, I feel we need to implement a plan, create a management performance program.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
Yes, employee morale is very low. And I think one reason I decided to run is coming to the board meetings, at the end of every board meeting, the trustees are given a chance of every board meeting, the trustees are given a chance to speak. And what puzzled me is during the employee negotiations with the teachers and the CSEA, they rarely said anything about the negotiations, they weren't involved, they just kind of stood on the sideline. And I don't think they listened to the community, I don't think they listened to the teachers or the classified people. If I'm elected to the board, I will go to the union meetings, if I'm invited, and talk about what's going on. I will communicate, I'll let people know the pros and cons of issues that we have to face. But it takes open communication to develop trust. Money is tight, we all know it. But you know, we need some common sense in the way we spend it. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson? Well, thank you. I don't think that you have to read any reports to see how bad the morale is between the teachers and CSEA employees. All you have to do is come to a meeting and see how unhappy people are while they are addressing the board repeatedly and asking them to take a closer look at what the budget was and not to make the cuts that they were proposing. That's all you have to do to be able to know that there was a low morale between the teachers and other employees and the board members. How to improve that morale is by replacing the three incumbents. I believe that that is going to make a big difference in creating a positive environment between the teachers and the board members. Let's get all together, let's sit on table and talk about what the challenges are. Don't take the board's word just by saying that we're broke, and take it. That just is not acceptable. You have to show how the numbers work and how do they change from meeting to meeting is just incomprehensible. That's one thing that I bring to the table, I want to bring transparency and see everybody at the meeting.
Thank you. Ms. Corrales?
So I'm going to address the morale of the community because I serve the entire community as an elected official. What I'm hearing from the community is that they're responding to schools of choice like our aerospace academy. What I hear from the community is that they supported our school bond measure last year by 74%, Measure DD, to repair and modernize our sites. What I hear is that even our superintendent has received statewide recognition for his accomplishments. Palmdale School District is seen as a model up and down the state. I don't apologize for that, I will take credit and blame for the things that have happened under my tenure, and I have to tell you, I'm proud of our school district. Our school district is going in the right direction. I'm so happy to be here on this dais with these challengers because I hope you're hearing some very ridiculous claims about our district. How many times have we heard "second set of books"? That is outrageous and irresponsible. If you are prone to believe every conspiracy theory, this is not the job for you.
Thank you. Ms. Ferrin?
I kind of switch gears and talk as a teacher, and of course, morale is low. It's low across the nation, it's certainly low in the state. We are overworked, we are underpaid. I sat in a half a dozen rep council meetings, and I said that very, very openly to everyone sitting on that side of the room a half a dozen times. I said, "Let's not go past the second interim, let's not tell the county we have a budget, let's just wait." But I was overruled, and you know what? That's okay, that's how leadership works, that's how governance works. There's nothing wrong with that. But that, that problem goes beyond just the board and the teachers, it goes to teachers and classified. I've heard teachers say that classified people should be laid off so that they can maintain their salaries. I've heard them say it. I sat and talked to a rep council person in this very room who said that teachers deserve better benefits than the classified people do because their job is more important than classified people. I've heard them say that. And it was said with witnesses standing around me, I've heard them say it.
Beginning with Mr. Markoff, what do you know about the LCFF? And how will you implement that as a member of the governing board?
Well, the LCFF creates a base and supplemental concentration in grants in place of most previously existing K-12 funding streams, including revenue limits and state categorical programs. The LEA average that's expected, or was expected, was 7,643. Some of the documentation that exists shows that the LE, or LCFF, at full funding is going to be right around $12,000 per kid. I understand that because Palmdale operates in an area that has a high Hispanic concentration and also with Spanish being the first language, and also a combination of foster care and the food program, that we are one of the higher groups to receive LCFF funding. So as far as Palmdale, using the young acronym we score...
Thank you. Ms. Ricks?
Well, I've been talking to you about that for a while now, and I'm glad that that came up, because there are going to be some monies that are coming down, there are going to be the foster children, the African Americans, the Hispanic children. We're going to be getting more money into this district for them. But they're also going to start with the class size from the third grade, I believe it is, and they're going to have like 24 to one. And so I think that, I like what I've seen coming down with our board. I can't sit here and tell you everything about it because, of course, I need to have all the books in front of me. But if elected, I will make sure that you know as well, so that when you come to the table, when you come to this room, that you'll be able to ask the right types of questions for your children.
Yes, I think that LCFF is going to change the entire way that Palmdale School District
is funded. There will be more money, it'll come in gradually over the next six years, and right now, we know that will be substantial money. We don't know all the restrictions that will be put on that money, and we won't know that until after the first of the year, but we know it's substantial. We do know it will bring you to the table because there has to be a plan adopted that has to include teachers and classified and parents and everyone to have input, and that plan has to be adopted before the board can adopt a budget. So it should bring all of the stakeholders to the table and give everybody a voice, which will be a nice, nice thing to happen for the Palmdale School District. Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
I agree with Mrs. Smith on the fact that this is implemented over a period of time, all the money doesn't come just in the first year. The students are English learners, low income and foster needs, and we have a huge proportion of that, we're going to get quite a bit of money. We don't know how much, and we don't know what we're going to be able to spend it on. As soon as we do, we're going to send it down to where it needs to be. But we have to follow the law, and we have to do what we're supposed to do. One of my concerns about this is that we're going to do some great work in these three lower groups, but what about gay kids? What about kids who need, who want special music or special classes? Is this, is this funding going to take care of them too? We're going to have to be creative in how we go about this, so we have equality for all students and make it go across the board.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Whitaker?
I know it's identified funding, it's supposed to be for cultural needs, it's supposed to be for, like they said, foster children that's within the school district, and it's supposed to help us, help the class sizes and different things like that. Hopefully, it would bring about more teachers in the district, hopefully, it will increase the books and the learning materials that are brought to the district as well. So that's what I got.
Mr. Wilson?
The local control and funding formula will bring new monies into the district, and I think it's important, we realize a couple of things. First of all, the money is over, like Nancy Smith said, over a six-year period, so there's money to be invested. I hear people spend money, but let's invest the money, let's invest it and get it to the classroom in technology, something that's going to last more than six years. And we can see our test scores improve with our students, but it's got to be spent wisely. Every dollar that's spent is important. With the LCFF, we need to make sure we're making the wise investment for our future. We need to listen to the community, we need to get, listen to the teachers, the classified, and spend the money wisely, invest it wisely. Thank you.
Mr. Correa?
Thank you. Well, everybody addressed the monies coming to the LCFF. I believe that what we need to do with that money is create a program, have teachers and parents meet once a week, once a month, and talk about how their kids learn better and create a new program that is going to help the education of our children. That again is going to bring back a lot of things that are going to be positive for our kids, and we need to implement that.
Thank you. Ms. Corrales?
The local control funding formula is being described as a seismic shift in the way that public education is funded in California. It's going to equal about $7 million for our Palmdale School District. That's when you need experience and good fiscal stewardship. I have to tell you that it's been very difficult in these economic times, to show respect, to make sure that we make the right decisions for our entire school district. I have to tell you something, I am not easily distracted. I am focused on student achievement. This board has set as its mission, student accomplishment, student achievement, and these little tantrums are distractions. And I got to tell you, I'm focused on our kids. Our school district is, as Mr. Ferrin said, adult-centered, excuse me, student-centered, and it's taking away from the years that it was adult-centered, and I think that's been a positive shift for our school district.
Thank you. Mr. Ferrin?
So let's talk some nuts and bolts. Fully funded in 2020, the LCFF equates to $184,400,000 for this district, $180,400,000. When we calculate that backwards over the next six years, and we have to do that, taking out percentages for those special groups, we have only what we've guaranteed by the state. Our guarantee this year is $96 million, that's our funded deficit, and potentially $114 million, which is the leftover beyond that, and maybe if we get some fallout after that major re-bid, as Ms. Smith alluded to, we have about $8 million left over. That takes us back to the table. Absolutely, positively, 100%, that takes us back to the table. There's no disputing that whatsoever. That takes us back to the table, and that's good for kids.
Thank you. Mr. Markoff?
Okay, the challenge of being the last person to answer, or one of the last people, is not to beat a dead horse. So I'll give you the one-minute version of what the local control funding formula is. Previously, there was like the basic state funding for the districts, then there were all these categoricals like money for kids with freckles, money for science education, money for new books, all these different things. They've kind of gotten rid of most of those categoricals, and now what you've got is you've got the basic funding, which everybody gets, and then you've got two additional pots, which is funding which goes based on enrollment of your children who have economic disadvantages and your English language learners. So it's really a kind of a simplified system for the funding, and Palmdale's in a great place to benefit for it, from it, because we support so many children with so many needs, so I think it's going to be a definite positive for us.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to try and consolidate four questions from the audience into one, so please bear with me. How will the board reach out to the parents of children attending the district? And they would like to know that in detail. Specifically, how will you reach out to the Hispanic community and parents of English learners? And lastly, how will you create more home time and less time at home spent on schoolwork? So we'll start with Ms. Ricks.
How will the board reach out to the parents? Well, the first thing, what I would think, is that we would have to invite more parents to these board members, these board meetings. Listen to what the parents are saying, because I don't think that you're hearing they're being heard right at this time. As a parent, I don't think I would have been heard at some of the board meetings I've attended, because if you sit here and I don't take in what you say and then bring it back to you in a form of something that's going to be tangible, then I'm not doing anything for you. And as far as Hispanic communities, well, I think that we need to have more translations, translators, if we can get some more translators, we need that heavily. And I also think that technology will give the children more home time.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Yes, I think, I think we can involve the parents more by not having all of our meetings in this room, that we take the meetings out to the school sites where the parents may be more comfortable and more at home with what's going on. I also think that if we make it so it's not maybe quite so formal all the way through and give the parents a chance to talk, some of them are intimidated to stand in front of the board, and they need to be made comfortable. I think the translators are a great idea if parents ask for them, because our parents can't understand what's going on if they don't understand what we're saying, and so we need to have that ability. But I do think going out and inviting people in and making sure we invite not just favored nation people, but all of the parents to join in on this plan, so it's not just the few that always contribute, but we get additional parents involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
I'm really glad you asked us this question. We have several ways that we reach out to parents, and there are probably so many more that we could do. The Launchpad just came out, this went to all parents, it talks about everything that's going on, there's a message from each principal in here. We have the superintendent's Parents Advisory Board, we have PTA, we've been a many of their members. We have the website, we keep a lot of things on that, we say what's going on, there's a calendar there. We have Dlap, which I think is going to evolve into a different parent advisory group, a larger group. One of the things we're talking about, so what are we going to do about all this homework? New things are coming. There's now flipped classes, where you watch online the teacher's lesson and you do the homework in class with the teacher. It's a really cool thing that's coming. We are now going to take what's really happening with kids, because they don't want to do homework, do the homework in class with their peers and their teacher, and watch online the lesson on their computer. It's a great thing, and it's happening everywhere.
Thank you. Ms. Whitaker?
First of all, I think that we all should get to know one another. I mean, you know, the Antelope Valley is a diverse group, it's a melting pot, and we have to celebrate each other. We have to celebrate that we have African Americans, we have Hispanics, we have Caucasians, we have everybody in this area, yet we don't know each other as well as we should. Why not celebrate the different heritages and the different programs? I mean, I don't see a lot of that in the school district. I don't see a lot of programs to celebrate your history. I mean, we should have cultural forums, we should be able to bring everybody together and say, "Okay, let's celebrate, let's do a melting pot, let's show everybody that, you know, your culture means something," because it does. We're all one big part of history. And I also believe that as far as school time, we need to bring technology into our homes. I mean, the school district, we're a little bit behind. I mean, I see people with iPads and everything else, and I don't see them at our school district. My son, I have to teach him how to work a computer, I have to teach him what to do and what to look for, and if they send us something...
Mr. Wilson?
I do think we do need to find ways to get parents more involved in the education system, and there's been some good ideas shared up here. Possibly some Saturday meetings with, for the school board. So many parents are commuting, they don't have time in the evenings, they're worn out, they're tired. Maybe once in a while, have a meeting on the weekend and let the parents come in. And how about having some kind of questionnaire? Parents aren't comfortable coming in front of the board and speaking for three minutes. Maybe if we had a questionnaire that we could send out and let them, or drop off questions when they come to the board and ask the board to speak to the issues that they're concerned about. And I think that will foster some two-way communication between the board and the parents. So we can find ways to do that. Technology is important, a lot of school issues, parents can get online and check their students' grades and homework and get messages from the teacher. We don't do that in the elementary schools. We can work on that. And other technologies in the classroom could help students knowing what their homework assignment is.
Thank you. Mr. Correa?
Thank you. Well, I think I know how to reach out to my community. First of all, I like the idea of having meetings at the schools at some times, so that there is more participation between the parents. And I also like the idea of having the meetings maybe on Saturdays, like you said. But yeah, what about having not only more translators at the school sites to meet with the teachers on the day that parents, we talk to our kids, teachers? What about having a translator at the meetings? What about doing what we're doing, passing cards to the questions that are asked to us? We are shy people, we first of all have to learn a second language, and... and we are intimidated in speaking in public because we have to speak a different language. We learn that language and maybe doing what we're doing here, having our parents write down what their questions are and passing them so that they're not the ones standing in front of the podium asking that question. That's another way to get more participation. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brown?
Tonight you have heard some really great ideas about how to better engage our parents and especially our Hispanic community. The big news flash is that we're already doing all of these things. We probably had six different Saturday meetings this past year. We already have increased technology in our campuses. We have a program called Our Big Campus where teachers are texting and emailing parents so that there is constant communication about assignments, about what's going on in the classroom. I have to tell you, as a full-time school board member, I go to all 24 of my school sites and I'm already engaging, I'm having these conversations, I'm having these discussions that are meaningful, that make me a more effective school board member. And I have to say, myself being Hispanic and able to speak Espanol, it's very important to do that outreach to the community and I'm already on board. I think the schools that are most successful are the ones that have parents that are fully engaged. And I celebrate that, I embrace it, I support it, and I live that as a school board member.
Thank you. Mr. Farron?
Thank you. You know, we talked about having Saturday school board meetings and sending out pamphlets and flyers to parents and those are things that we do. How about connecting our curriculum, connecting what kids are learning in the classroom with their parents so that they actually understand what's being taught in the classroom? And that's what Common Core does. Common Core sets a standard so that parents can actually understand the rigor and the relevance of what's being taught in the classroom. They get it, just like the teacher gets it, just like the kid gets it. There's not any mystery about what's happening in the classroom anymore. It used to be that education was this big mystery. The mystery is now gone. Okay, so let's talk about the Hispanic community. A few years ago, we revised the EL master plan in this district. It's time to do it again so that we can address those additional needs of our underserved students, our EL students, everybody. And as for curriculum or technology in the classroom, are you kidding me? We have footsteps to brilliance that we just put into the classrooms where our kindergartners have iPads that they're using in the classroom, the parents can get the software on their cell phone.
Mr. Markoff?
Okay, what I would do to increase parent connection, parent involvement? First of all, I would have regular office hours. I don't mean eight hours a day, but X number of hours a month, maybe four hours a month where parents can set an appointment with me. And of course, anyone else on the board would be invited to join in, obviously. The reason I would like to do that is this environment is just so intimidating to parents. I mean, I remember I addressed the board once a few years back. I mean, I've got a background in public speaking and performing on stage, my legs were shaking, okay? It's very intimidating. And this room is designed backwards. I mean, the public servants should be on the floor and then the public should be elevated. I think this is like a courtroom. So I'm just saying, speaking as a parent, there are many of us up here, it's so intimidating. So I would do that. Also, in the meetings, I would make sure that before something is...
Thank you. Mr. Moffitt?
One of the things I would do is I'd have open, honest meetings and I wouldn't be cutting off as a board member individuals. I don't know how many of you have seen the Calvin Robinson videos. Raise your hand there, Calvin. There. You see, if you look at some of his work, you'll see that some of the treatment that constituents have received has been disgraceful, where bailiffs have been called out and asked or been used to threaten somebody to shut down. That will not happen. I know enough that we probably won't have too many fights when I'm here. We can probably get rid of all those guys. I could solve them. But pass that. The next thing we would have is the Hispanic dual immersion program that my son goes to where it's kind of a flip where the Hispanic students become the teachers when Spanish is being spoken. I love that, I like the multicultural aspect that was spoken by Ms. Whitaker. We did that at Iowa State.
Thank you. This next question, I'm going to combine again some audience questions. What have you done to prepare yourself to be a member of the governing board for the incumbents? How many years do you have? Have you served on the board? I think most of you answered that already, but apparently we need to address that again, please. And then the secondary question is, who has endorsed you? This time we will begin with Ms. Smith.
Well, I think I explained a little bit about my background. So I think I have probably the most in-depth background and the real experience of anyone up here. And I do understand that board members don't do the day-to-day running of the district, but they are responsible to know what's going on day-to-day in the district so that they can follow up. I think that I've been endorsed by the PETA group, by the Palmdale Elementary Teachers Association, by the Classified CSEA group. I've also been endorsed by the Republican Party. And so I think I have a breadth of people that are endorsing me and that understand that I do have the experience that counts and that I probably don't need a whole lot more preparation, it's just getting the nitty-gritty of what's going on in the district today.
Thank you. Ms. Stanford?
I've been on the board for six years, I did an education for 40. I've been endorsed by Jim Ledford in Palmdale First, by the electrical workers Brew, by the American Federation of Labor. I've been endorsed by many, many educators, by many of our principals here. I have received money and checks from many teachers and many principals in this district unsolicited. I have been told by many of the principals that if the three of us don't get back on here, that they will seek employment other places because they are happy with all of the upgrades and the things that we've done to make us a better district and they don't want to go backwards.
Thank you. Ms. Whitaker?
Well, I've never served on a board before. I have 20 years with L.A. County Parks and Recreation. I've ran several after-school programs. I've watched kids grow from T-ball to college. I've been an intricate part of that. Me myself, I don't have any endorsements. My children and my husband endorse me and I feel that's pretty good. I did not go out solicit money, I didn't solicit anything. I'm just here. I'm here as a parent, I'm here as a wife, I'm here as, hopefully, your next board member. Thank you.
I prepared by, I went to the Antelope Valley School Board Association Education Summit in September where they talked about a Common Core and local controlling funding formula. They also touched a little bit on AB 1266. As far as, and I've attended meetings, I mean, I take, on the weekend, I'll open up what the board is going to be discussing at the next meeting and I take notes and I read to see what's going on. And I've come up here and I've asked questions to the board. I've even had a member of the board say, please stop asking questions. But I'm here because I'm concerned and I don't think it takes a big education degree and years and years in education to be a good school board member. We need some common sense and we need some wisdom, we need to take care of our children, we need to get the whole team in the district working together to provide an excellent education for our students.
I have with me nine years of experience serving the city of Palmdale's residents. As a planner for the city of Palmdale, I have served this community for nine years and I am proud of the projects that I've worked on and that have come to fruition, from there to facilities that serve our residents. That's what I bring with me, experience, serving the community. I also have with me an education. I have a master's degree in public administration, which is just recently obtained in December. I have been endorsed by PETA, CSEA, and Los Angeles County Democratic Party, they have endorsed me. But most importantly, I have the support from my wife, Vanessa, my daughter Natalie, and my son Giovanni, who are here tonight. That is what is most important to me, their support in having me here, talking in front of you. That's what I bring to the table, my experience, my education, and the support from my family.
Well, I can tell you that in the 12 years that I've served as a school board member, I have had two absences. I've missed two meetings in 12 years. I am committed and dedicated to the children of our Palmdale School District, that's not going to change. In regards to endorsements, I've been endorsed by teachers, parents, principals. Basically, every facet of our community has extended their support to my campaign. Specifically, the Los Angeles County Federation of Labor has endorsed my candidacy. That's virtually every union in our county, including our classified employees, thank you. I'm endorsed by the Democratic Club of the High Desert, the only Democrat endorsed in this Palmdale school board race. Assemblymember Steve Fox has endorsed my candidacy, Larry Chimboli, a former assembly member and first mayor of Palmdale. And certainly, one of my staunchest advocates is Palmdale Mayor Jim Ledford and his team of Palmdale First. And I think that's one of the important things that when you're reviewing the candidates, that you think of people that have given loyalty to our city and school district.
Mr. Farron?
When I ran for my second term of office, someone asked me why I was running for the school district and I said, again, that I wanted to leave a legacy for children that was almost impossible to break in this district. And I'm not sure that I've been able to do that. I think that there's been so much infighting at this point that I haven't been able to leave that legacy. And so I'm going to run again, one more time, and see if we can't do that. I've been endorsed by numerous school administrators, a lot of teachers throughout the valley, physicians, lawyers, a lot of community members, Mayor Ledford in particular, and I appreciate all these endorsements.
Thank you. Mr. Markoff?
What I've done to prepare is basically lived the last 30 years of my life. I've been fortunate to do a lot of different things. I've worked in education, for a short time I was a teacher. I've trained teachers, which was a wonderful, I trained kindergarten and first grade teachers, that was a wonderful job. I've written curriculum. Now I work as a grants and funding specialist, helping districts find funding for the projects. I've also worked in the business world. I've worked for big giant corporations and I've worked for small struggling businesses. So I've seen how the business world also works. So I want to bring all this background to the board, these different perspectives, because that's what's needed. It's to get the kids to succeed academically and to get the kids to succeed in the future financially, that background is very helpful. And to finish my last answer, what I would do at board meetings to help parents understand is, before we start discussing something, I'd have the person give the audience a little background because the last board meeting, I didn't understand what they were talking about and then Ms. Shepherd explained it to the audience and I still didn't understand it. It had something to do with a 5% interest versus a 10% interest in something and I didn't even know what the something was.
Thank you. Mr. Moffitt?
As I've conveyed, I've got the most education of anybody on this board. I've got a doctorate, two masters, and the people that have been supporting me. I have an endorsement from Brad Sherman, Congressman. I have an endorsement from the Democratic Party. As you may or may not know, that it's one of the first times that an incumbent who's been part of the Democratic Party has not received a single vote for the Democratic Party and that would have been Sandy. So there was, I happen to be endorsed by all these individuals here and why, if you'd all stand for me? I happen to, in preparing myself, I solve business problems and individuals' financial problems on a daily basis. We're in a huge problem here. This is what I do for a living. And I think that I can come, and I can solve, unlike what Sandy said, there is a second Son of Woods. I can solve that problem. I can bring accountability and I can read and I can work with every one of you.
Well, first, I too have been endorsed by the Democratic Party. Steve Fox, Dave Simleman, Darren Parker, V. Jesse Smith, the president of the NAACP. Oh, and let me not forget my biggest foe, PETA! What I've done to prepare myself, well, I've attended board meetings, I've talked within the community, I've gone out and I've knocked on your doors, I've picked up the phone, I've called you, I've listened to what you had to say so that I can come back here once I am elected and do what you want. Well, I take that back, I'm going to do what's best for the children, okay? I really am, because sometimes the things that you may want are not the best for the children. I'm going to do what's best for the children first. But I'm going to take into consideration everything that is said and that I've talked about. I've been told that there are trainings that I can attend for finances because I'm not a financial person. So therefore, I want to be able to understand everything that's put before me. Because if I don't understand it, that means that somebody else can come and do it.
Okay, we're getting close to 90 minutes at this point in time. I'm going to ask one more question and then give the candidates an opportunity to do a wrap-up. So the last question I have, and Ms. Stanford will start this question. Palmdale School District opened as a partnership and independent charter school a year ago. What are your thoughts about that? If you were a member of the governing board, why were you in favor of it? If you are running, what are your thoughts about that school? And we'll start with Ms. Stanford.
I'd be happy to answer that. I was instrumental in helping to open the Aerospace Academy and I'm proud of it. I'm very proud of it. And one of the reasons I wanted to open it is I wanted as many different kinds of schools of choice that we could have. Because when I got the kids from Juniper in my ninth grade class, my last year of teaching, they couldn't make paragraphs, they couldn't spell, they just sat there and they were very polite and nice and it was okay to take a zero and fail. That is not acceptable, that is not what we want from our middle schools. Both Mark Gross and myself, we pledged that we would end that. And we have opened Dos Caminos, we have opened the Aerospace Academy, I'm proud of it and what it's doing. And we need to do more things like that in the Palmdale School District. David G. Millen is at Avid School, we haven't talked about Avid today. Avid is a huge part of Palmdale School District. As many different schools of choice we need. And I'm ashamed when people think that we did this at the detriment of Palmdale School District. We did it for the kids in the Palmdale area, that's who we are and I'm proud of it.
Thank you. Ms. Whitaker?
Well, the independent charter schools, I really don't have a great view of independent charter schools because we're here to enhance the schools that we have. We have children in our schools, like she just said, that aren't doing well. Enhance our own schools. Let's make our schools better, let's bring technology into our schools. Let's do things for our children that are in our schools. I mean, they have a selection process at most of these charter schools. Let's get our teachers on board, let's teach them a elite curriculum and bring it to the schools that we're in. I mean, I don't see why we have to go open up a whole new building and allow that to come in and take the place of what we're doing. Bring the technology there. I mean, I see, you know, like I said earlier, let's bring the Apple computers to us. Let's bring the technology to us. Let's send computers home for weekends. Let's do things like that. But to open up a whole new set of schools and divert the children, I mean, enhance the teaching, the teachers that's at our schools right now.
Thank you.
The questions I would have asked during the process is, dependent charter school versus independent charter school? Was that considered to make them a dependent charter school? I know it was a partnership between the school district and the school board. And I'm sure that the children that had the opportunity to go to that school are well-served. But on the other hand, other questions, how much money was spent, invested in the new school by our district to improve it and get it ready to be a charter school? My wife teaches at Desert Rose, they've had a portable classroom sitting in the middle of their playground for over a year. And, you know, everything is important and I just, I don't understand why we miss some of these things. Yes, it's important to have an opportunity like this for the gifted children, but what about the other kids that are getting left behind because we're not taking seriously all of the kids in the school and doing our best to help them all out?
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do believe that all schools have a right to exist, whether they do charter, private, religious based, they all have a right to exist. As a parent, I do have the right to choose where my children go to school. I do believe that the public education system should be the best that we can have for our children. That's what it is for, is to educate our children in a public system which is going to be the best that it can be for children's education. I do not agree with supporting the creation of other schools while taking finances and students from the Palmdale School District. That's what those schools will do and are doing. They're taking the best students with the highest grades. They're taking the best students with the highest grades, and what that is doing is lowering the grades of our kids in this school district. That I don't agree with. In terms of what it will do to the school, I think I just said it, it's going to lower our grades on our kids, because those schools are taking the best school.
Thank you. Ms. Carron?
Well, I have to tell you, I think it is shameful to criticize Palmdale Aerospace Academy and the students that are getting a wonderful education. A charter school is a public school. As a school board member, you have the responsibility and a certain level of criteria, not to interject your own personal emotion, but you have to follow the law. The Palmdale Aerospace Academy is the culmination of the working relationship, the positive working relationship between our school district, city, and the Aero Institute. There is a line around the block, a waiting list of like five hundred students that wish they could be in those seats. We are providing parents and students choice. That's what they want. I have to tell you, I'm very proud to have helped create and support that Aerospace Academy. Dependent versus independent, all these issues were discussed. It's very difficult to charter a school in the state of California, and it should be. But Aerospace Academy met every level, every threshold, and I fully support it.
Thank you. Mr. Barron?
Just to cut all our charter schools this time, I would like to talk about the Aerospace Academy. That started off as an idea about Palmdale School District going K-12. And I'll tell you why it happened. When we were looking at the school district, we saw systemic change, substantial systemic change in test scores throughout the district. Our scores were rising across the district. But when the students were matriculating from here to the high school district, those school scores were immediately dropping. So when we saw kids in ninth and tenth grade and we were comparing those scores, we saw an immediate decline. And so we thought to ourselves, how can we better serve these students? Are we a K-8 district, or are we a K-adult district, K-into-career district? And so we started having a conversation about creating a K-12 situation in our district. And that's how the Aerospace Academy kind of evolved. It evolved from us saying we wanted to do a K-12 district, and the state saying, "Huh, you can't do that without chartering the entire district." Or you can charter a school. And so we went out to the city of Palmdale and said, "Can we charter a school with you?" And the city of Palmdale said yes. Aero Academy said yes.
Thank you. Mr. Markov?
Okay, I would say I'm in favor of anything that generates competition, because competition then generates excellence. Just by way of example, raise your hand, how many in here have either now or in the past have owned either an American-made car or a Japanese-made car? Raise your hand. A lot of you. How many of you have owned a Russian-made car? Nobody. They make junk mobiles. There's no competition. We have excellent teachers in Palmdale, excellent administrators. I know we're up for the competition.
Mr. Markov?
Well, how many of you remember a couple of years ago, the mantra, "We don't have enough money, we need to shut down these schools." And then lo and behold, we create charter schools, and yet we're dealing with this Aerospace Academy different than we're dealing with, say, Kamal School. We're in a situation with the Charter Academy where we spend a ton of money fixing it up, and we still pay facility maintenance on it, and we treat it totally different than Kamal School. Seems to me that we've got a little bit of a problem. In the Juniper transfer, from what I understand, the four hundred kids that left the Juniper School cost the school district $2.4 million. So we're... The financial argument is we couldn't afford it, and yet we're still filling the bill. That's a nonsense argument. And then you look at who happens to be a director. Sandy's husband happens to be involved. So that is very controversial. Does it look like he's on the board?
Thank you. Ms. Wirth?
First of all, the teachers at Palmdale School District are very capable of teaching our children. We have some of the best teachers here. But their morale is so down that they cannot bring to the table what your children really deserve. Now, as far as the charter schools go, I agree with you there. We have our mayor and the board of directors over there at the charter school. We have Mr. Innis, he's over there on the board. So there's some other conflicts of interest there. So I think that the schools should be opened for our children, and if you allow our teachers to get the right type of finances and... Finances, I'm sorry. Finances and their benefits that they have been... They did not get all these years, because they did not get raises for those benefits. And so it won't be lost to allow those teachers to get back to what they're doing, and that is to teach.
Thank you.
I don't have a problem with charter schools, per se. I have a problem with how this one came into being. It came at a time when finances were off, and I think that's a problem. I also think it's a problem when I'm being told that other members of, other stakeholders were not at the table to discuss this until the very end, like our teachers' union wasn't there, a classified union wasn't at the table to discuss it. And I think when your finances are low and you've got stakeholders that are already having morale problems, you involve them and you make sure that they understand what's going on and how it's going to impact, and let them give you input into what they think is going to happen, so that you're not having to move teachers or remove people because you created a charter school. I think the charter school's there. It'll stay there. I have no problem with that. But I think any future ones that are formed have to have more people sitting at the table.
Okay. Well, we were going to start on this end, but as far as our final question, but we didn't get all the way around. So we're going to start with you, Mrs. Whitaker. You have two minutes to wrap up. Anything you want to tell us about your candidacy, your closing statement, and it'll be our two-minute timeframe at this point. So we're going to start with you, Mrs. Whitaker.
Okay. My name is Michelle Whitaker. I am a parent in the school district of two children in the school district, as you are. I will fight for teachers. I will fight for a great education for our children, not just mine, but our children. I hope that we can move our children from ABCs to college degrees eventually. I want our children to be able to move and navigate through the world as any other children. I think that low test scores is a hindrance in this district, and it has been for a while. Every time I open some mail, I see something saying that your school is a low-performing school. Would you like to go to another one? That's kind of ridiculous to me. I think we need to equip our teachers, equip our students, and equip us as parents in order to move forward. Me myself, I have a master's degree in organizational leadership. I have a bachelor's degree in sociology and African-American studies. I've been with LA County for twenty years. I have not actively campaigned. I recently had a scare, a breast cancer scare, and I just got an ovary. Please, you know, forgive me for that. I just found out that is clear. It was just something I was doing. I think about that all day. I am a mother. I'm a wife of fifteen years. And hopefully, I'll be your next board member. Thank you, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Ms. Wirth?
Again, I'd like to thank everybody for being here tonight. I'd also like to thank the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this and putting it on. And thank the district for the use of their facilities. As far as, I forgot to mention my endorsements. I've been endorsed by the CSEA, Classified Employees Union. All the candidates were given a chance to speak at their meeting, and the members voted on who they would support. And I was very honored to get their endorsement and their confidence in my candidacy. I want to thank them. I'm also in a unique position, whereas also I'm endorsed by the Republican Party. And I'm a Republican that believes we need to get more involved with everybody in our community, with the union members, with Hispanics. And I'm here because I want to work with everybody, listen to everybody. My background, I've got nine years of hotel and restaurant business, and I know how to balance budgets, how to control expenses and costs. My twenty-six years as a retail sales rep, my job is communicating. I have to develop relationships. I have buyers that I've dealt with in years that are meat cutters and manage their meat departments. I have other buyers that I go to their corporate office and sit down in an office and make a formal presentation. So I know how to communicate at all levels with people. And I look forward to spending time with people in the district, the community, and helping to solve problems. Solve problems by listening, being involved, seeking advice, and communicating when, why decisions are made the way they're made. I also, as a husband of thirty-seven years to Ruth, and raising three kids and not raising grandchildren in the way that grandparents do by spoiling them, I think I have a certain amount of wisdom that has come to me, being in that position, in the positions that I've had. And I think I'd be well-served to be on the board, and I would really appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Mr. Carron?
Thank you. Again, thank you all for being here tonight. My name is Juan Carrillo, and I am a parent. I have a daughter who went through the school district. She went to Desert Rose, and now she's at Pitt Night. My son is nine years old. Tomorrow, he'll be nine. And he is a student at Golden Puppy. I know the way that my son learns. I know what he needs in the classroom, and I know that he needs to have happy teachers in the classroom instructing him. I do value education, because as an immigrant, I came here and I had to learn another language. I am a product of an ESL program. I went through the ESL. I worked during the day, went to school at night, all the way through my bachelor's degree. Got back to school, I got my GED, got my high school diploma, my Associate of Arts, my Bachelor from Cal Poly Pomona, and just recently obtained my Master's from CSUN, working full-time and raising a family. Something that is not easy, but when you have a determination, you can do wonderful things, and education is one of them. What I bring with me is nine years of experience serving the residents of the city of Palmdale. Like I said before, I take pride on seeing projects that were bare-dirt to buildings that are serving our community. I bring with me experience in dealing with partnerships, because I sit on a table dealing with architects, engineers, private sector, and other public facilities, such as the fire department and many other ones. So that's what I bring with me, my experience serving the city of Palmdale residents, my education, my Master's degree in public administration, and the experience of having kids. I'm a parent, and I know what my son needs. And I want to be able to provide something to the community by putting my education and my experience, so that we can have a best educational system that the Palmdale School District can be. I ask for your vote, and thank you for being here tonight.
Ms. Carron?
I too would like to thank the League of Women Voters in Alamo Valley, of which I am a charter member of. I have to tell you, I'm very proud of our Palmdale School District and the record of my public service here on the board for twelve years. I mentioned to you earlier that I had a former experience as a city planning commissioner and president of two chambers of commerce. I have to tell you, my experience here on the board has been incredibly rewarding. It's rewarding to be able to help people, to be able to help students, to engage parents that maybe didn't have a voice in the past, and I want to continue that for the next four years. I also want to mention that I'm very happy to have this opportunity to reveal who some of these candidates are. You are listening to some folks making some pretty outrageous accusations about our school district that are founded in lies and distortion. Some people up here have no regard for the truth, and I don't mind setting the record straight. One of the things that you will find about me is that I'm a fierce advocate for public education, hands down. So when I see things like Mr. Moffett handing out a card just a few months ago, saying that he's a candidate for state senate, it makes me wonder, why, what is his real motivation for running for the school board? I want voters to be educated about every single one of these incumbents and challengers. I'm proud to run with Carol Stanford and Jeff Barron on our record of accomplishment, positive accomplishment here for our school district. And I ask for your vote on November 5th, because I know that this is the governance team that can bring back higher test scores, make sure that we're on the right track. You have some very radical candidates up here that would steer this ship in the wrong direction. And I want what is best for Palmdale. I put Palmdale first. My loyalty is to my city, my school district, and the students that I serve.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, everybody. Those of you that know me and don't know that I don't say derogatory things about people. In fact, you rarely hear me say a whole lot at all. I'm very quiet. I'm very introverted. When I do say things, it's usually well-thought-out. I spend my time thinking about what I'm going to say before I say it. I want it to be meaningful. I want it to be important. I want people to walk away having learned something from what I've said. I'm also always very humbled by the fact that people do that. I'm humbled that anybody asked me to run for school board in the first place. I'm humbled that they asked me a second time. I'm humbled that they came to me a third time and asked again. And I'm going to tell you that I'm very genuinely humbled. I'm surprised at some of the behavior at this dais tonight, some of the lies that have been told, some of the misinformation, just disingenuous stuff that's going on up here. And it's not okay to sit up here and be disingenuous, openly disingenuous, in order to mislead the people that are sitting in the audience and the folks that are sitting behind that camera. It's not okay to do that in order to get a vote. It's not okay. So I would ask some folks sitting on this dais, why they were suspended from the State Bar in Arizona? Why that same state... Why that same state fined them? Why that same state did that for misconduct in court? And why they're sitting up here telling lies? That's what I want to know.
Mr. Markov?
Well, I'm in a little bit of a conundrum. I wrote this really cool closing statement, and it's so wrong. Because originally, it was about me kind of like being Mr. Tough Guy. You know, I can be pretty tough. You want this, I'm that guy. But you know, I think, I think there's enough going on up here tonight that I don't need to do that. That wouldn't set me apart. I'll just tell you a story. No, no. I'll just tell you a real quick, quick story. There were a few years when I worked in Hollywood. It was fun. It was different. But boy, I tell you, it was nice coming back to education to teach kindergarten and first grade teachers. But one day, I was working at the film company, and there was a big movie star, Academy Award-winning movie star who was really mad at the producer. And I got the envious job of going over to her house to apologize for the producer. And someone with a very big ego, very nice person, we sat down, and we talked for about fifteen minutes, and then at the end, she said, "David, you are a man of peace." So I think that's something I could bring to the board. And I'm not picking any sides on anything tonight. I'm not. Because I think it's important that we don't... Whoever's on the board next has to just move forward with respect. So I think I can bring that to the board. That's something I hold ready. And I thank you for the chance to talk with you tonight.
Mr. Moffett?
Thank you. My name is Joe Moffett, and since I've started running for the board, we've gone from a sixteen-point-seven negative to positive. In fact, there is a dual set of looks. The superintendent admitted as much in a cabinet meeting. So the fact that she's conveying something else is, in fact, disinformation. The fact of what I want to do is hold people accountable, and the fact that my, not suspension, but probation got brought up. Star, would you stand up for me? I happen to get... Star went through losing four of five quintuplets. And I lost my dad in the same year. And I happened to be in a court in Washington, DC, and I was fighting for an individual for military benefits who happened to be dealing with Bethesda. And I advised the judge that this guy should be criminally prosecuted. The same thing that I'd like to see happen possibly with Roger Glaze and Kathy Shepherd.
Boo! You're a liar!
The fact that they happened to be...
You're a liar!
The fact that they happened to be gone may save us the necessary part of firing them.
You are a liar. You shouldn't sit up and lead this group.
It's not just Sandy.
I happen to want to make major changes. I plan on going through the different programs, people that have been setting up this self of money, playing with it, paying consultants. And one of the things that I also like to do is I'd like to get a copy of all the text messages that maybe can show all of the backroom deals that existed between the board members and the superintendent, why they were supposed to have regular meetings, open and honest is what we should be having here. Again, I can stand to be on probation for good reason. Again, I can stand to be on probation for good reason.
First, I want to go back and I want to thank PETA, which is the Palmdale Teachers Association, for my support because without them, I wouldn't be here. Because I don't have money, I'm not a big person with money, but the teachers believe in me, so I'm out here supporting them. I'm not going to sit up here and promise you things that I can't give, but I do want to say this. I have a vision. As your board member, my vision is to restore the trust in the Palmdale School District, build morale, create open lines of communication for all stakeholders, bring new technology into all the classrooms, and I don't mean six iPads. And with these components in place, the Palmdale School District will be able to provide a healthier learning environment for our children. And yes, it does take a village to raise a child. So I think that at this point, what we need to start doing is raising and start building this building for our children. We need to start building as a village. Everybody needs to come in and be heard, every parent, every teacher, every staff member, every certified, every certified person, every classified person, the community at large, you all need to make a part of this school district because we have children that are going to be sitting up here one day. So I want to thank you very much for this time and I want you to be able to remember me, Joyce Ricks, and vote for me November the 5th because I will stand up for you and help make change.
Ms. Smith?
Yes, I'm running for the Palmdale School Board to bring back the trust, the transparency, and to make sure that it is focused on our children, the money is focused where it belongs, and to make sure that we are accountable and we know just how much money we have to spend on the children. And despite what has been said by some of the current incumbents, there was a turnaround of about $30 million from the time it was done. And Mr. Ferrin, the reason that Los Angeles County and the fact-finder ruled the way they did is because the numbers that went to them were wrong. And if I hoped, and I had tried to, they were wrong in how much you intended to spend. And it's very, very clear with that. And I think those things have to be faced, they have to be corrected, and we have to work on that and make sure that what we give the public is the truth. And I don't know how much the board knew. I'm not claiming the board knew or didn't know, I'm claiming what the numbers were because I've been through the last three years audits, I've been through the last three years budgets and every interim financial and I can tell you what the pattern was. So, and I'm here to try to correct that. I think some of the things this board has done have been fine. I think the way you go about doing it leads to some of the disruption because there isn't the public discussion that needs to take place out here. And I think it would solve a lot if people just understood some of the things and the public discussion was out in the front and not just come out and vote. I do believe that some of what we saw tonight, especially from Ms. Crowell, can point out why there isn't trust and why people feel disrespected because I do believe that we talked about that tonight. And I hope you'll vote for me and we want to straighten this out and I think we can do that through October.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes, I'm the last one to speak and so I'm excited to talk to you about why I'm running for board of trustees. I feel like I have a proven record. We implemented professional learning communities, we brought up the rigor and relevance, we made a lot of good teachers into great teachers, we did a lot of professional development with them, we added schools of choice, I'm really proud of that, the David G. Mellon School, Dos Caminos, our dual version programs are wonderful, our Palmdale Learning Plaza is an amazing school, we have great things that we have going on for us. I am proud of the Aerospace Academy. We're good stewards of money, LA County came in here and told us we had to do certain things and we did them. And Mr. Estrada, I know you wanted me to take our teachers to Disneyland, but I couldn't pay the rent and I didn't do it. And I'm proud that I took a stand and said, we cannot afford to give you money that we did not have. The last thing I want to say that with all due respect, Mrs. Smith, I'm surprised that a retired superintendent would want to come back and make another run at this again. We are still dealing with some of the things from your administration. And I'm surprised that a seemingly successful lawyer would want to buy a seat on the Palmdale School Board to help him become state senator. That's my last.
Thank you, Ms. Stanford. I want to take a minute just to thank all of the candidates. You know, public service is certainly what we all need in order to make our community a better place. So first and foremost, let me thank you for offering your services to our community, each and every one of you, no matter what the outcome is. Thank you for all of your. And I also want to take a minute to thank the League of Women Voters for putting on these debates. I don't know if this is the last one, but they have put on debates in every one of the school campaigns and the city campaigns and we appreciate their efforts to make sure that we as voters can be as informed as possible. Let me remind you that you can either vote now if you're a vote-by-mail individual or please make sure that you vote on November 5th. The most important things that happen in life start in the classrooms of our schools. Please, take time to make this important to you and vote. Again, thank you very much for being here tonight and for taking the time to participate in this activity. Good evening. Thank you.